Experience, agency knowledge, opportunity, computer technology, interview, resume. Yep, and then there's a separate tab on the back, which I can't show you here. So you'll rank each one individually, so you can put all the candidates in the second tab of the table before, so it shows exactly like you know.
So I made two separate ones. Yeah, I wanted an idea.
Yeah. It's pretty easy to work with. Yeah.
I just want to give it to the board they never did.
How are ya? Good. You look good.
I didn't want to bring that in here because when you're on.
Yeah.
What I worry about is just clothes.
I don't have my.
I keep a clothes. It's probably a flyer. Oh, yeah, because they had to.
Hi.
Yeah, we have this.
Jerry, what's up?
How are you doing?
How are you doing?
It'll take like a day to get you to act.
I've been vacationing for two weeks and now it's time to grind.
Well, time to try to get relaxed. All the chaos.
Oh, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, last time we did that was three and a half years ago.
Three and a half.
I don't think I've done it. I don't think I've.
That was fun.
Oh.
Yeah, really, it was.
Okay, I'll have him play.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. It's probably going to be a few stragglers coming in over the next couple of minutes. We have a very short agenda and then some other just odd side business to take care of and keep towards the end. If anyone has any appointments, anyone has to get anywhere, we could put you to the front. My, your, your head?
Mine is actually the last item, it's number 11.
All right, and let's start out that we are being taped, so please make sure if you recognize name and where you're from or who you represent, so we can collect all that on the microphone. Before we get started with that, let's start with roll call.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Morning. Okay, we are going to start out, we have some guests here regarding agenda item number 11. We'll start out with Mike Floinski.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mike Floinski, Trumbull County voting official. Commissioner, we have guests here from Boak &amp; Sons, that's our contractor for the Board of Elections roof. Work began and then work has been halted for approximately 45 days. So we're in negotiations over how to proceed with the work, the cost of the work, and we've come to an impasse where we might not agree on what it should cost to get it done, but my recommendation is that we accept change order number one and move on. And the reason for that is because we have no other alternative. So if we say we don't agree with these gentlemen, and they're here today and they can speak to the change order, to what's involved with change order number one, if we say, you know what, we don't agree with you guys, get off the job, and we go to the number two guy, we're going to actually spend more money than approving change order number one and moving on with the project. So in the best interest of the residents, we need to get this thing done, we need to move on, we need to get Edria her roof, so that we don't go through another winter with a faulty roof. We just need to bite the bullet and move on. Now, change order number one is broken down into three parts, okay? The first item, number one, is the additional cost for the adhered roof, and it's itemized on the change order 61,186. Item number two is some value engineering. We've been negotiating with Boak &amp; Sons on how to resolve our differences. And so we've identified some items where we can save some money in the contract. That's $6,896. And item number three is a result of the condition of the roof. So we're going to adhere this product to a gypsum deck. We know the deck is in bad condition. As part of the contract, Boak has already conducted an infrared inspection of the roof. We know we have bad areas. We know what the costs to repair those areas are. So what we've done is we've extrapolated that cost and rolled it into change order number one. So it may be an effect that we don't, so for item number three, we're allowing $30,496 for gypsum deck roof repairs, we may or may not utilize that entire amount. But we may need it, because once we get back to work, the work is going to progress quickly and those decisions will be made in real time on the job, and we're authorized to move forward with those changes. Those are additional costs that were included in the original base bid. That make sense?
Do you question though?
I'm sure you do.
First, I'd say, how would this not cost in the initial inspection, initial bid worth? Half a million dollar contract with this roof. How was this just found out now, and it seems like that would be the most basic thing of the condition of the roof before we even got started, would be my first question. Second question, why has it been shut down for 45 days and we're just hearing about it now, as we're getting into fall?
So let me answer the second one first. So we tried to negotiate a settlement and move on. We can't, we're at an impasse. So we're going to agree to disagree. That being said, what are our options? We terminate the contract with Boak, go to the second bidder, that cost us more.
Was this missed in engineering somehow in the initial?
No, no. So where we are now is, so when we set the roof up, our consultant and ourselves went up to the roof and we did pull tests on the roof, we did six pull tests on the roof, okay? We had True Fast and Mulehide representatives onsite. We have certified letters that our pull test worked, that the system we expect will work. We got certification from the manufacturer. That's what we went to bid with, okay? On July 7th, Boak &amp; Sons mobilized on the project, started the project. We got notification on 7/12, a few days later, that the system's not working, okay? And then they have proposed an adhered system, and that's when we started negotiating about the cost of the adhered system versus a mechanically fastened roof. And that's where, that brings us up to this state. We're at an impasse on what those costs should be, granted. They can articulate their position, they're here, and that's why they're here. My recommendation is that we move on. We're at an impasse. We're not going to resolve this, negotiate, but we need to move on. Let's move on, let's get Edria's roof done, and they're in the business of putting roofs on, we need a roof put on.
And we're in the business of being responsible with the taxpayers' dollars, and $84,000 difference isn't chump change, as you guys could imagine. So I would like to hear from the guys from Boak, how was this overlooked in the initial bids, how, when was this found out? Why do we have to do this now compared to what the original bid sheet said?
And real quick, Mike, where does this put us in relation to the other bidders? Are we now, the second lowest bid now the lowest? So with this change?
So Boak &amp; Sons' base bid amount was $454,044. Forty-four, yeah. Bruber's base bid amount was $535,860.
So about $80,000 difference.
Well, yeah. The change order number one in its entirety is 61,186, which would bring the base bid for Boak &amp; Sons to 515,230. Bruber's base bid is 535,860, so there's about $25,000 cheaper than Bruber's with the change. So even with the change, they're much less than the number two bidder. Let me continue, that's point number one. Point number two is we had a bid alternate as part of the project to put a scupper, a roof hatch in the roof. There's no roof hatch in that building. So those guys got to climb up the ladder on the outside, risk life and limb getting up there. The building's over 16 feet, by code compliance, we should have an interior roof hatch. So we added that to the project. Boak's bid was $19,0629, which is a good price to put the hatch in. Bruber did not submit a price to put the hatch in, okay? Third item. As part of the contract documents, we knew we had a bad roof, we knew there's going to be repairs in the gypsum deck. We asked for the unit, a unit cost for the deck repairs. We have a cost from Boak, it's $38.12. We have a cost from Bruber, it's plus $50. So no matter where you look at it, how we move forward, if we go to the number two bidder, the county is at a loss. It's going to cost us more and we're getting less. That's why we recommend we move on. We're at an impasse. We're not going to agree. That being said, my recommendation is we pay it and move on.
Jim?
Hi. I'm Jim Boak with Boak &amp; Sons. Peter may be in here today. We didn't write the specification, we were here to perform the job as specified, right? My express. Pull tests were done before the bid was put out. Same company did the pull tests as the ones we asked to come back, and they said it wasn't going to work. We probably could have tried to go and do the roof, try to work with it, but we knew it was not going to meet the specifications, and if you ever had a problem down the road or blow off or whatever, everybody would walk away, you'd be trying to find out who's responsible.
So what we're saying is this roof comes with a 15-year warranty? Or 10, 20? 20-year warranty. And so that's why we have True Fast and Mulehide there, those are the manufacturers, those are the product representatives.
That's the part you're going to use to.
We want that warranty, that's what we're paying for is that warranty. So it's very important that we have their adherence to the.
Their blessing.
Yes, their blessing.
Right, and you don't want the liability as well. We want to perform properly. We've done a lot of work for the county here, we've done for the Board of Education and everything like that. We don't have these kind of change orders. But once again, as Mike brought out, even with our change order, we're significantly less than the second bidder, let alone the third bidder that was on this bid, that was quite a bit more. And we came in, it's like taking this room, the specifications were made to put tile down. When you tear this carpet up, you find that's a substrate in the way it is, you can't, you got to go back and put carpet. That's exactly what we have up there, there is two totally different systems, so we're happy with it, and we're trying to live with that and move on. We've done everything we can financially to do it. We also have product up here that we can't use, we have to get off and supply other product to do it. There's a cost, there's crane charges and everything like that. Obviously, the prices of everything has changed since we originally bid this job to what we've done today. I went to buy another truck, a box truck this last week, it was $18,000 more for the exact same box truck that I bought last year. I can't afford that, I haven't moved from that. We honorably tried to do a lot of work, we're a union contractor, bringing proven people to this job site. Our competition that bid it is none of the above. But we bring good quality product, good quality people to the job site. We can hash back and forth today, but Boak &amp; Sons has been around for almost 50 years doing quality product all over. We did the Hone County courthouse as well, where Kent State doing ice rinks. We get the difficult jobs. This is not an easy job, the logistics of it being as well. And like I said, my competition didn't even want to bid to put a roof hatch in, because that is quite tedious type of work, you got to know what you're doing to do it right. We feel we're more than qualified of anybody in the area to do the job, do it right for you, and we brought it to your attention that the job should be done and performed to obtain that 20-year warranty. I'm asking the Commissioners, meeting tomorrow, to please pass this. We need to get going on this, because we keep waiting to hear, and it's been back and forth, but we've kneeled down everything, in the meantime, costs, everything keeps going up. We went ahead and hoped we bought the material, because we had another price increase that had just come up August 1st. We bought the product to have it in the shop, just to avoid another increase to come back and say we need another, was it $6,000 or $7,000? We're trying to do anything we can to bring the cost down, because we live in, half our employees live in Trump County. We have good faith with you, and we're asking for the Commissioners to understand, bring us to the job site, so we can get back on it as soon as possible.
How long will it take you after you're back on the job?
I can't tell you. We had whole crews who do another job, I can pull them off, but I would say within a week or two. The problem with us is we get the size of job this is, as it gets towards where the weather starts changing. We've been this, you know, we've had dead of summer, and you go out hard and you can get a lot of productivity. We didn't even get a chance to put any extra labor into this job with the idea of weather. And we typically change our job costs about eight to nine percent when we get to any job half September 1st. We're holding everything we can as tight as we can, especially the material cost is most of our change. Am I correct? So I'm pleading with you to please, let's move on, let's be credible, because I know there'll be other work down the road. By the way, with me today is John McNallys, he works actually for Boak &amp; Sons, he used to be the mayor of Youngstown, he was the county commissioner of Hone County. Chris Whetson with us quite a few years as well. Express operations.
Are there any legality issues with this, with the size of the bid compared to where it is, we're going to come across anything there that you think, Mike, as far as?
No, 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 we're following the procedures specified, you know, and this is an ARPA project, we're following ARPA rules, so we're within compliance with funding requirements, guidelines, we're going through the change order process. That's what this is, this is a change order process, and we're following the process.
Mike, Jim, how much do we allocate out of ARPA for this? We have to dip back in ARPA?
No, we're fine.
Well, we'll, it'll be, it will increase it to, from, the original cost was four seventy, that we have allocated is 473, 673, and it'll bring it up to 558, 450.
So another 80 grand out of ARPA.
Yeah, it will be in the revenue loss category, yes, that's where we have it.
May please, I think, what was the original budget for this? Seven hundred thousand?
For the, for the roof?
For the roof, the original budget?
473, 673 is what I have.
I think the question is, what was the original engineer's estimate?
I don't know.
It was 770,000 at all.
That's only when we put in for the ARPA fund, how much do we put in for? Do we allocate?
We don't, no, we allocated, once we had that bid, once that bid was accepted, that allocation was changed.
So that's what we approved in the ARPA, was what the bid was?
So that's why you have to do a change order now in order to do that.
So what we did is we built the project, right? We came and we, when we bid the project, we got permission from our ARPA attorney, and that's when we had the 770, the engineer's estimate on the project, the 770 is what was approved from our ARPA attorney. Then once it was let and bid, that's the number.
Right, that's the number that is.
So Tanya did approve the 770 were initial.
Yeah, so.
And we have several hundred thousand dollars less than the budget.
So we won't have to go back to Tanya for this, it's just a matter of taking it on our budget.
So what percentage are we still under budget with the engineer's estimate?
I don't, I don't have.
I mean, that's what.
Yeah, we're thou, hundreds of thousands.
Right.
The original estimate, yes, we're still low.
Do you see any other crossover runs besides this? Is this, this completes it out the door, drive it off the lot?
You think I want to come back here?
I hope not, I hope not.
Exactly.
Yes, Edria?
Hi, Edria McCavigge from the Deputy Director of Board of Elections. I just want to support this roof being done in a timely manner. We are getting into fall season, I don't know exactly, having the roof changed from the mechanical to the adhesive, I'm sure that temperature might have to do that. Over the past few weeks, I want to let you know that with all the rain, we're seeing more damage. We have a busy season, we've had reelections going on this year, we're coming up again. I just, it's getting, I don't know how much more you could go with this roof. I brought a news article back in '86 asking for a roof, and, you know, here we are in 2023. I do have one request to Mr. Boak. See Warren won't pick up our garbage because of where he puts construction roll off?
One, we don't own a container, we don't do it, but we will ask that company to please move it, that's fine, that's easy math, we'll call them and ask them.
I appreciate that.
But we would probably need some help, we do want it to put it over there, and we'll work through Mike.
We've got some motorhead wires there, that's why it's worse than.
Yeah, but if you move that, they will come in and move our container to the back of the lot, and you put yours back.
But we're going, we have to get in every day, because they do that a night time.
You'll be able to, but they won't even come get our container, I've been trying to negotiate with them.
Two won't.
To move it, to see Warren. They can't get in, can't at you.
It's not accessible for their trucks.
Correct.
But if they, but they'll move there, so it won't be a problem in the future.
Yes, they get there.
So then you go back to where you were.
They can't even get in until they move it.
We'll work with you to get that done properly, so everybody's, that's our.
That's a no-brainer there.
Okay, we'll do that.
That's my biggest issue today, besides getting this roof done.
I guess as long as we're legal with this thing, as far as approving a change order like that without having to rebid with something, you know, I don't know, probably is a reputable company, of course, we've all grown up, seen the commercials, you've done business with the county many times before, and this isn't a company that we're hesitant to work with in the first place, so.
Again, a lot of these change orders are reasonable administrative in nature, it's not like, I think, one person would say, consider it to rebid because it's not within the scope of the project. I disagree, I think it is. So this is completely within the scope of the.
Yeah, we have change orders in control.
Right, I know, but.
You know, you know the world we live in, but I don't think this one will be a problem. I think this.
And again, I mean, we can, we can go back and forth and argue and argue about what the cost, but at the end of the day, we're going to this change order, whatever that cost is. My position is, let's move forward, we need to move forward.
I agree.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Love.
Thank you. Take the rest of the day off.
Thank you for coming in.
All right. Thank you.
All right, take care, number 11. We'll start back at the beginning, we're going to get a presentation tomorrow about the eclipse from John Ickey and Beth Carmichael, it's coming up in April next year, a 100-year eclipse or whatever it is, again, we just had one a couple of years ago similar, but then number one, dispense the reading of the minutes, approve the bills. Number three, additional appropriations, Martha Yoder?
Yes, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. So our first additional appropriation is listed is from the Board of DD, and that is money that's received from the Department of Developmental Disabilities, DODD, for a Train the Trainer program. The second one is my office, we're setting up a new fund to account for Office 365 subscriptions. So we'll be receiving funds into that and then paying those bills, because each department, each office is now paying for their own subscriptions, but we're ordering those to keep it, first of all, to get the price that we need to get, and also to keep it very orderly so that we keep track of them. All right, Health Department, there's actually two there, the $300,000 one is additional grant funding, the 110 to 50 is also a new grant services for homeless youth and homeless pregnant youth. The Commissioners is money allocated out of ARPA or appropriated out of ARPA for the blueprint phase to 434, 540. Can we just move on?
Yes, number four, transfer appropriations.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, the, remember that these are transfers within a fund, we're not transferring fund to fund, these are going within a fund line item. First one is the Sheriff's Department, and it's to fix an over budget, they're taking workers comp, which has been paid for the year and putting it into various accounts to allow for, to make sure that we are not over budget in those accounts. The second one is adult probation, social services, communication equipment. There's four here from the Board of Elections that are fixing over budgets in employees, in election workers, and operations supply accounts, so they're all different, but different amounts, but they're all basically the same idea. Sanitary engineer, I'm going to let Bob do in just a second. Highway engineer is to fix an over budget in advertising, printing of public notices. The domestic relations transfers, one was needed to pay guardian ad litem legal fees, the other one was to pay for safety vests, and the other one was for office supplies, and I'll let Bob do his.
Bob Marano, sanitary engineers, we're transferring $7,500 for our Champion pump station, we need to repair a roof liner and add some gravel to the roof.
So number five is the amended certificate that we approved at the Budget Commission meeting on 8/21. Most of these correspond back to the additional appropriations, but the only one that doesn't is the planning commissions, and that will be, and it's done in a separate line item probably next week, and that one is they receive monies from the Sheriff's Department for reimbursement of share sale of the house, the county repairs.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number six, concur with Trumbull County Engineer and receive resolution number R3823, passed by the City of Cortlandt on June 20th, 2023. Requesting Cortlandt City number three bridge be renamed the Vietnam Memorial Bridge in honor of Private First Class Andrew Sinchak Jr. and Specialist Four Terrence Wink, both late degree graduates who were killed in action. Cortlandt City number three bridge is located on East Main Street in the City of Cortland and has set a public hearing for the consideration of bridge name change. The notice setting for the date, time, and place of hearing shall be published in a Tribune Chronicle in accordance with the Highway Revise Code 551109. That goes without explanation there. Number seven, grant permission to county engineer close the roads listed, five points, Hartford Road for the Hartford Apple Festival on September 16th, layer road from the 11th of September all the way to November 24th, and that's between Hewitt Gifford and Gibbler Toot for a bridge replacement, with the detour being east on Richer, south on South Levitt, west on Hewitt Gifford, so that'll be a distraction for some people. Number eight, concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant the special hauling permit to all steel coils, AWL transport. Concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits, request from the companies listed. Permit fee has been submitted and subject to approval, conditions listed on the permit, we want for wind stream, robust sunright, AW lumber. And then, concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant special supplier fleet permits, Bristol disposal, Delquodri lawn maintenance. And that concludes that business, that was very, very easy today.
[laughing]
Ray might have to walk around town to find a story somewhere. Okay, we got some other business to take care of, and I guess everyone's got their own little things. I wanted to start off first, let's do 911 first. Tacey, give us an update with the tornado and with the weather we had Friday, can you give us just a brief update here of how things went? Did we lose power at 911? Did we have to go to backup generator or anything like that?
No, we actually had all power, everything was fine there. Still having some issues with tornado sirens that aren't working, receiving a lot of complaints from citizens about tornado sirens. That's a common theme among all counties, I know coming from here on county, we have the same issues there. People don't realize those are meant for outdoor only, they're not meant to be heard indoor, and those are outdated and antiquated and very expensive to replace. I know Hickey has probably gotten a ton of calls about the same thing, that's why we're trying to do another push for people to sign up for WENS, the Wireless Emergency Notification System, those go directly to your phone. Those sirens outdoor are meant specifically for, you know, if you're at a sporting event outside or something like that. I know they're having a lot of issues with those not working, we have similar issues back home as well, so kind of a common theme unfortunately, and there's really no funding to kind of replace those. But everything. and there's really no funding to kind of replace those. Um, but everything ran fairly well. We did not have internet for a couple of days over the weekend there, so that caused issues, you know, for us, you know, for faxing and, and all that stuff. Uh, everything should be back up today. Seems to be. We had some issues with fax servers that were down today. Sundance was down at a couple of agencies, and that's all back up now. Um, kind of tying into that, we met with Doug Glennman from ID Networks last week. Um, he's gonna be rolling out an update to our CAD um, within the next, I'd say, few weeks, but we'll be realistic and say a couple of months because, you know, nothing ever rolls out on time. Um, but that's gonna be rolling us out to a current version of CAD. Um, we've had some more discussions with CAD with the whole, uh, Sheriff's Project and, and all of that, um, so working towards that. Um, all our background checks came back clear. We had four backgrounds going through. Patty's gonna reach out to Alex and probably do higher recommendations for those four, um, because we are gonna be losing one here pretty soon. Um, then I think we have another interview set up this week for what would be a fifth candidate. Still nowhere near full staff, still dealing with.
How were we staffing with the storms and everything? Cause that, that came in kind of an odd hour between afternoon shift and midnight shift. Do we have enough staffing there?
Yeah, they had enough staffing. They actually got through. They did get slammed, like you always do with a storm. I think at one point they had a hundred calls, you know, backed up. Um, but most of that's, you know, tree damage, and storms are worse than any mess that you'll have, other than a catastrophic event, you know? Um, but they got through it like they always do. I mean, that's the one thing I've noticed as an outsider coming in. They managed to do more with less, better than anybody I've ever seen. Um, you got people pulling excess eighty hours of overtime in a pay period, which is insane how they can function at that rate and still be human. I mean, I know when, how I go without sleep for a couple of days, the brain doesn't work as well as it should, and they're, and they're functioning, you know, at a high level stress job, getting by with that. It's not ideal, obviously. We need more staffing, um, but they're getting by and they're making it, you know, making it through. Then, uh, I think.
I, I know we've done in the past, past nine-one-one directors, when we had situations like this, employees that would work like that, they've done some type of, uh, commendation for the employees or some type of letter or something, and they're thanking them for circumstances, especially when it was like tornado related or things like that.
Right. We did have two commendations last week that went out, um, to Dispatchers Kayla Roof and Cynthia Garito, uh, for their actions during the hostage situation in Holland. Um, both of those dispatchers did an exceptional job. Uh, Kayla is what people would consider fairly new. She does have five years at another agency, but fairly new to us. Um, she did extremely well handling that, that situation, and Cynthia was on with the actual victim who was lodged under the bed for multiple hours from eight PM to six in the morning, and was on the phone for over two hours with her, trying to keep her calm. Who, she was obviously having, uh, you know, panic attack and, uh, some anxiety issues in the situation she was in. Uh, both did exceptional well. Um, we listened to the tapes, and, uh, both of those ladies were presented with commendations for that. And then I think the last thing we have is, uh, Wednesday, we're gonna be looking at the Cortland Bank location, where the Health Department's going. Uh, Patty looked at it on Friday, um, and going back to take a look at that Wednesday.
With that, the Health Department, of course, is buying the Cortland Bank, and the upstairs they don't have a use for right now, and they did have servers up there that the bank used, so they had a room there for their servers and everything, and they've got space. So, it's worth a look at there, cause, uh, we may be able to do something with the Health Department if that was something that would work, so. I know, Bill, you looked at it initially a long time ago, and clearly the base of the farm layer wouldn't do anything with that upstairs, now that the Fire Department doesn't want it. Maybe another option, another one to look at. And you did look at the Gibson Building already?
Yes.
And you kind of liked that one a little bit?
Gibson Building was very, very nice. Lot of space, I think six to eight thousand square feet, um, second floor, private secure entrance. Um, wood still need a raised floor added and stuff. Um, the nice thing about that is you're about a hundred yards away from Warren PD where the tower is, so there would be no issues with connectivity for that, and there's, um, high-speed, you know, fiber right outside that building there on the street. Uh, my only concern with the Cortland Building is we have to see where a tower is, um, so we're looking at that, like I said, with Tim from IT. Um, Roger's gonna swing by as well. Our radio vendor's gonna swing by as well, so if we can have those. And then, uh, we're looking to move forward with the feasibility study within the next couple of weeks to get all that taken care of and, you know, give them those three locations at least. We have three central locations now.
Okay, very good.
Have, have we put out an RFQ for the feasibility study or?
Not yet. Um, I'm working with a couple of, uh, vendors right now on that, and then working with the Prosecutor's Office to make sure we follow the legality steps and, uh, but I assume that's gonna be going out within the next two weeks.
Okay.
So, should be pretty close.
And what date do you go look at the Cortland Building?
Uh, Wednesday at noon tomorrow. With the Health Department's gonna be there on site and do this and stuff, so.
Yeah, I just saw Jack Simon yesterday, one of the board members, that you were coming out.
Yeah, so.
You've been in there, right, Eric?
I've been in there, but not the upstairs part. I, I toured it with the Health Department, which is part that they're occupying, I didn't go upstairs.
I saw the upstairs. Well, you saw the upstairs too, right?
So, I, I definitely.
I think it'd be great, the upstairs, but it's, it all comes down to towers and all that science stuff or whatever as far as radio signal.
If I can make it with you tomorrow at noon, I will. Otherwise, I'll reschedule with Jack.
Okay.
That was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me know if you're gonna make it at noon. If you are, then I won't.
Yes, exactly.
Um, I got a call today also from the Superintendent of Holland Schools today. They own North Road School, and they have no use for it anymore. They just went to their court battle to see what they should do with it. Um, they don't wanna tear it down. They said it's too good of a school, but they said they can trade it or utilize it with another governmental agency or entity. So, they basically called today and said, hey, we got this building. It's two floors. You want it? Is there something you can use it for? Can we work something out? We don't wanna see it torn down. We don't, and we have to work with another governmental body if we're gonna do something with it. So, it is an old school, so I imagine that's probably way overkill for nine-one-one center. But, um, Bill, if you can, it's on North Road, actually.
It's a Bolondale Elementary?
I, I think it was North Road Elementary or North Road.
Growing up from Most Magnificent McDonald's on your left.
Oh, okay. Kind of true north, about quarter mile behind it. But he said it's, it's theirs. They just don't have a use for it. They're not worried about the money, uh, factor of it. They just wanna see further court order goes to a good, good home somewhere.
I know it's an enormous building out there, it's a school, so.
Is there anybody I should contact to?
I'll give you a phone number when we're done here, Superintendent, and if you can at least get an eyeball on it. I don't know what other county agency would be able to utilize for it. We're kind of out of agencies for, now, there's an overkill with it, but, um, he initially had talked to Jack Simon, that's why he called me.
Okay.
He called Jack back, and they're like, hey, we got another place, so he, he recommended that he call me and see if we had another use for that building for the county. Great location, but probably more than what we can chew. And then, uh, the next thing I want to get off to was, um, transportation. All right, we got inundated last week. WRCA is shutting down their bus routes from the, uh, after September eighth. We've had.
September eighth, Friday is September eighth of the last day.
Yeah, we've had quite a bit of interest. I get a call from the Mayor of Lordstown. I get a call from Altium Sales Human Resources Department. They said they have eleven employees. They know to take the bus, that they're gonna have to let go if they can't get to work. Uh, they've been, they've been notified that they were losing their bus route. What, what can we do? Um, Senator J.D. Vance's office called me. They were made aware of it, probably through Lordstown. Same thing that, you know, what can we do? Uh, reached out to our state reps offices. They said they did have some funding to keep the route going, at least the Warren routes, and the transportation bill in the Senate pulled it out of the bill, so that's not an option anymore as far as the, the latest transportation bill. Or, um, so right now we're at an impasse. You know, I, I'm sure the city Warren is probably working independently of us, but fact is, we do have people that use the bus. We do have people that use it to get to work, and we're gonna be without that bus service. Now, the numbers, from what I could tell, it's eleven at Altium. I don't know how many at Foxconn. I, I know the routes didn't work correctly. The one girl that I talked to had to leave an hour early, and then she had to wait after her shift was done for two hours to be able to take the bus home, which turned her eight-hour day into an eleven-hour day just to go to work. So, it wasn't like the bus was a perfect scenario for anybody. Um, but we do have that. Now, we've had some other talks. I've been contacted by a couple of different people this week as far as, as far as other options besides WRCA. Seems like everyone's got an opinion now. I've got a couple of requests that I'll be turning in to you, to Diane, and to Mr. Harris as far as real numbers on the Warren bus routes that they had, so that, as I educate myself on, keeping up to speed on what's best and working with you, then I'll get the facts at least that I need as far as real numbers of participants on Route eighty and some of the other, uh, other bus routes that they use. They were Warren based. But, turn the floor over to you, cause I know you've been chomping at the bit.
I don't have enough. Yeah, I thought everybody.
All right, okay.
So, I'm just, yeah, I, I wanna give a little history first before we go on with what happened. So, these routes began back in, uh, March of twenty twenty. They were funded by ODOT. Um, and what happened is, we all know COVID hit. Because of that, ODOT decided to continue funding. Now, with these funds from ODOT, they said right from the beginning, these are only temporary funds. We, when I'm saying we, I'm talking as a group, have to come up with other funding. So, they could have cut us off at any point in time. So, basically what happened was, surface was canceled by ODOT because Dean Harris did put in funding for this. Uh, but back, I think a week ago Monday, he was told by ODOT that he did not get the funding for this project. And there's other projects that he has that he did not get funding for. So, that's just a quick, you know, update. But, like I said, the bottom line was, we knew going in, this was not gonna be something that was coming in all the time. Any questions on that? So, uh, again, uh, and part of this, I'm gonna be telling you, was already in the paper, but the cost to run this WRCA fixed route with their, what they call complimentary, eighty car transit, five routes, is one million dollars. Keep this running, it would cost one million dollars to keep this running. The one thing I can tell you right now, though, is WRCA has already, I'm sorry, I forgot to say. My name's Mike Salma, Trumbull County Transit. Got to do that. Um, WRTA has already done what they call a run board. What a run board is, is simply that the drivers will go and sign the route that they want or that they're gonna run. They've already pulled these routes. We can't even get, we can't even do anything for three months, WRTA. So, that's good and bad, it sounds sad. It's not something we gotta decide today, but we've got three months to make a decision when they do their next run board, which is the end of December. Okay, so, on this sheet here, I do have, uh, transportation trips by route, um, for WRTA. So, the number seven route was the Southwest, did two thousand six hundred ninety-four trips. That's in a three-month period.
Okay, and that's, just to be clear, cause this is always said. People think that's two hundred, two thousand six hundred ninety-four individuals. No, that's trips. That's trips. Could be, one person could ride the bus.
Right.
Up to.
So, for example, I've had a couple of calls, uh, from this one gentleman. He rides it four times a day. His roommate rides it four times a day. So, it's eight trips.
In one day.
In one day.
By two people.
For two people.
Um, it's a little, yeah, it's, that's differentiation.
So, eleven people go to Altium.
Right.
Over a five-day period, that's fifty-five trips or whatever.
Right, so eleven, if eleven people are going to work, that's twenty-two trips a day, times five days would be seventy-seven, or whatever it would be.
Hundred and.
Hundred something, sorry, yeah, yeah, hundred something, whatever, whatever. I still try, yeah, so it'd be over. But, yeah, so, I mean, that's what it would be. You're right.
Yeah, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, see, the, just a little information. Difference with what they call fixed route and on-demand. On-demand, they actually have that client's name. They know who it is, and we know who that person is. Fixed route, the person just walks down. We don't know who they are. That's your difference between the two routes. It's a big difference. It makes a big difference because.
Well, a lot of those individuals could be using the senior or disabled transit.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Cause they could fall into that category.
Right.
Now, Mike, dispel this or not, cause I had someone call me the other day, and they said, there's about forty people that are homeless that live at the bus terminal, WRTA Youngstown. They said they get up in the morning, they, they're cleared out the doorways, they're cleared away from the building.
Yeah.
Half of them, they said, get on buses and just ride the buses all day. They get off at Warren for a little bit. They jump back on the bus. At night, they go back to WRTA, they go to bed again. They go to sleep in the doorways and dumpster. I'm sure those people are being counted as.
Well, those people are counted.
As riders, and supposedly there's about forty of them total that just ride the bus. That's their home. That's what they do every day, is just ride the bus.
Right, and that's not unusual. I've been in other systems where, yes.
So, a lot of the numbers could be inflated by.
Some of, yeah, um, we've been off subject here a little bit, but part of that.
Just trying to keep the facts still as far as riders.
Right, part of that is, is in the wintertime, it's ninety degrees outside. They keep riding the buses cause it's their condition. In wintertime, just the, it's got heat, so.
Right.
That's one of the reasons they do it, is because they're able to say either warm or cold, or, you know, during, um, during those transitions. So, that's not unusual in any system. I've seen, I've seen that a lot.
I, I wouldn't say it's unusual, but it's still a fact that.
It's still a fact.
Surprised me that they said WRTA knows they're getting on the bus, and they clear them out of the doorways, and they jump on the bus.
Right, so, what's going on? So, the north route is, is two thousand nine hundred seventy-two trips. The west is four thousand eighty-three trips. Elm Row, which is their, is their big one now, they did over six thousand trips. Now, this is in three months, so they're doing over two thousand trips a month on the Elm Row route. Um, and then.
But some of these routes, Mike, I mean, North Jackson route.
The North Jackson is, uh.
There's nothing.
There's nothing, correct.
It's two hundred thousand dollars for that.
Right.
And it's not really taking anybody anywhere.
Correct, it's four hundred twelve.
That would be Altium, I would imagine, right, or not?
Correct.
Four hundred twelve trips over that time period.
Over that three months.
Isn't there a more efficient way to get these people to Altium rather than paying two hundred thousand?
And I, I brought that up.
We could get all these people limos for that practice every day.
I, I brought that up to Altium. I said, why don't you have your own rideshare Uber if the employees are making that much money?
Right. I mean, for eleven people, the.
And they even agreed that, yes, they had, from some people, some people already bought a car. They used it initially, worked there for months, bought a car.
Yeah, so, I, I just wanted to give you for a three-month period, but the one thing I was also informed, um, WRTA was doing about four thousand trips total between the routes down here, first of the year. Now, they're up to over five thousand. So, they, they, what's happened, good, bad, good or bad, I mean, as the time is going on, people are starting to ride this more. People are starting to rely on it. That was the bad one. I mean, it's taken us a long two years to build it, and now we're.
Well, what, what is nice is we do see which, which routes are viable and which are dogs.
Right.
Not dogs.
No, no, no.
That are, that are not the most efficient way of providing this type of transportation.
Just cause I may say.
So, we do have.
I think, we call them dogs.
Dogs, whatever. I, I think I've heard them say that. This is a route is a dog, so. Um, we, we have seen, you know, which ones are viable and which ones we need to focus on.
Which is one we need to.
And which ones we, we honestly don't need to focus on, or, or focus a different method for those, for those types of people in those, that demographics, so.
He said Warren Express and all. He got, that's the one, they're thinking from here to Warren or Youngstown.
Correct.
And Youngstown, they arrive pretty much anywhere.
And that's the most traveled. No, and you're absolutely right. That is their third most, uh.
WRTA's third most of the travel route.
I believe it's their third.
And that's not going anywhere.
That's not going anywhere. No, they're not gonna get rid of that because.
Right.
Now, granted, like when I thought on the team, those numbers are gonna go down because there, there are people like you said that was.
Connecting.
Connecting to the Warren Express to do something else.
But the Warren Express, since its inception, has been a great route, and people do ride that. Because it's just, you know, I mean, connecting Mahoning to Trumbull, and that's, that's very viable, you know?
Right, yeah, so, no, it's been a great route, and.
And downtown area to downtown area probably provides more access to hospitals, doctors, government agencies, they need to sign up for whatever, if, more than anything else would.
Yeah, so, that, Warren Express isn't going anyplace. Uh, side note, as far as I know, it's still gonna be free on WRTA too. I haven't heard anything that's changed yet. So, uh, so on the WRTA website, it states that they are closing the route, however, have the clients call me, it does stand with administrator, call me, and I can try and help and define transportation. Now, uh, the other thing that Dean did send was ridership for what they call the complimentary eighty car transit. What that is, that's door-to-door like overtive.
Right.
Now, um, the difference with the FCA rules and our rules, and I'm not saying rules. FCA rules, their magic number is sixty-five for seniors. Our senior levy is sixty. So, there's a difference there. Um, so, uh, so what? Um, so, uh, so what he did again, he did five hundred and thirteen trips, uh, in, um, over this, uh, seven months, then January first, so July, he did five hundred thirteen trips.
Okay.
That comes out to seventy-three trips a month, senior and disabled. I do have Dave Murphy here from Comfort Caravan, and I've always talked to my other two vendors, they can handle this overload for the senior and disabled. And I honestly want to say anything.
So, as far, as far as, as far as that number goes, there's actually four of us that work within the program. We've taught, it is no problem, you're looking at a couple trips a day when you actually average it out. So, for us to take that pair of transit and move it into our system. We certainly appreciate that, and that was, I'm glad we rooted out that redundancy, you know, because that's something that they can handle.
Right.
Absolutely.
For, for a much minimal more cost.
It's an insignificant number.
Right.
At that five hundred. Uh, you know, between four, I must be sure we can handle. Here, here's my thing on this. We used to have participating communities contribute to this transportation. Now, all of a sudden, everybody's putting it on the, the backs of the entire county.
Right.
Much of which is rural and doesn't utilize the transportation system. It's not fair for the commissioners to say, okay, here's a seven million dollar tax and everybody has to foot the bill. What we need to have is targeted transportation and work with the communities, especially the cities, obviously, where it's most saturated.
Right.
And, and, and guess what? City of Warren, if they have a certain percentage that, that, that requires this type of transportation, this type of fixed routes, we need to work with them on, okay, if it's a two hundred thousand dollar route, because if you break this down, if it's a million dollars, each of these are about two hundred thousand, right?
Two hundred thousand, right.
So, if the, if the, if one of these routes is two hundred thousand, what is Warren willing to come to the table with?
Correct.
To, to, and we'll match as the county to, to assist in this and, and maintaining this route.
And besides that, I think the same thing, you know, my, our big thing is.
As opposed to putting on a tax that everybody has to pay.
The big question we're getting at too is, what do we do about these people who want to work in Lordstown? Why can't Lordstown become a participating community again?
Yeah.
Let them work with Foxconn and Altium, I guarantee there's got to be some, some negotiating power in there somehow. They want workers to be, be at their job. I mean, uh, uh, what would it cost to have a Trumbull County Uber for jobs like that to get them to Lordstown? Couldn't be much, it would be a hell of a lot less than a seven million dollar WRCA contract.
Of course.
Where we can get them door-to-door, pick them up, take them to work, when their shift's done, bring them home, could, I'm sure could be done for dollars a day.
The key is identifying these individuals.
Right.
That's what the key is, because what, otherwise, we're just throwing money at a problem, we have no idea how much costs. Throwing seven million dollars at a problem and saying, oh, this will fix everything, yeah, it probably will, but do you need seven million dollars?
Do you need seven million dollars?
No.
And they, and Mike, explain, what is pass-through money? I've had a lot of people come and hit me and that, and he said WRCA can act as a pass-through where they get the money, comes in the grants, and it can pass-through on to other entities to use that.
Okay.
What is that?
Pass-through money is not for us at this point. What pass-through money is, if you are a fifty-three oh seven grantee, fifty-three oh seven grantee is mainly for capital projects. Well, systems like this need operating, different people, well, you know what capital means.
Yeah.
Operating is putting drivers in the seat and running the service. So, you really need operating money. What pass-through money is, because I've done this in Cleveland, I've also done it in Cincinnati. What pass-through money is, is you're trade, you're switching money. You're giving, let's say you got five hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars of, uh, fifty-three oh seven money from the feds. You're giving WRCA one million dollars, they're giving you one million dollars back that you can use any way you want, pass-through money.
So, we could utilize that for maybe rides, rides, no?
No, because.
What's fifty-three oh nine?
We, we, right now presently, we, oh, yeah, my fifty-three oh seven, which is for, uh, early assistance, that's what we used to be at one time. That was part of what City of Warren had, that's what we gave up, uh.
Their dedication.
Gave that up. We, what we receive is what they call fifty-three-ten money, that's the five hundred and sixty-five thousand, give or take. That's for senior and disabled. We do not, as of right now, and we do not run for general public, that's part of the problem.
Is there another grant that's general public related?
I think what we're getting at is, is that fifty-three oh seven money able to be passed, be a pass-through for any other entity other than WRCA?
No, it has to be WRCA.
Because they're the regional transit authorities.
Yeah.
And they qualify for those federal funds.
Yeah, so if we.
But there was a time when that fifty-three oh seven money, I'm not advocating for what I'm just telling you, where that fifty-three oh seven money was passed through to the transit board and.
Well, that wasn't a pass-through, that was, it was just given, fifty-three oh seven.
Did they subcontract?
Oh, you can always subcontract too, but no, pass-through is.
Right, so people could subcontract through WRCA with that pass-through money to do.
Yeah.
Work rides or whatever.
Right.
So, there's a possibility.
Yeah, that's a possibility, but again, WRCA has already used their fifty-three oh seven money for capital projects. So, they don't have anything that they can use for operating, not till next year.
See, I was told on Columbus that's incorrect, that they do have funds that they can pass-through.
Okay, well.
But that's for another discussion, I guess that'll be in my letters too.
That's another discussion, yeah, that's another discussion then. But, so, like I said, so we can't do general public, but we can definitely cover the senior and disabled. Um, I don't, I've talked to Diane for a brief moment, I don't know the budget exactly, but I've kind of ballparked it. I figured this is going to cost us between twenty-four to twenty-eight thousand to do these extra trips. About verifying from Diane, I don't know, but I'm, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure, we can handle it financially also, from the senior and disabled. Now, when I'm talking to senior and disabled here, there's clients on the fixed route that are sixty years old probably that are running the fixed route. We can move those clients over to ours. It's going to be anybody that's sixty, that's fifty-nine and under, that is not disabled, that we cannot move over. Those are the ones that are going to be hurt, unless we can come up with a quick plan, and I don't, yeah, to do general public. And again, I don't have, you know, that's, to figure out a dollar amount for that.
There's just got to be a better route than a fifty-five passenger bus with three people on it, heading down a route. There's got to be a more financially economical.
Right.
Thing somewhere. I mean, we, we got it done right now with, with the force of vendors we have now. What, I, it just boovs me that everyone's trying to push, we got to have these big buses, got to have these big buses, got to have these big buses. For that type of money, like Mark said, we could rent damn limos to get these people to work for Altium for the price that we're being asked to pay for services that we're not going to utilize, anywhere near to the capacity of what they say it is.
Right.
And that's what we need to target, the general transportation, I'm not against general tra, you know, uh, obviously general transportation, but we need to target it for economic development and jobs and job creation.
Right.
If Altium needs, uh, rides, let's target that and provide those specific rides, as opposed to throwing all this money at something and having everybody just, it's a free-for-all, oh, yeah, we have, we have, uh, public transportation, but we got a lot of empty buses.
Okay.
Nobody wants to see that in town.
Right, here's our problem right now. Our problem is Trumbull County Transit for seniors and disabled. Is we do not transport general public, and more than likely, the clients going there are probably general public.
I understand that.
So, we would have to change.
You, you already, you're already going to handle on that part of things. What we're looking at is.
But my point is, a targeted general public transit service that we can augment through other funds.
Right.
In other, uh, if you use that two hundred thousand dollars for one of these routes to provide jobs to Lordstown, or rides to Lordstown, could be more beneficial, in my opinion. Or a better way to utilize that two hundred thousand dollars, and that's where you come in.
Right, and I, I'm going to say something, and Dave, please speak up, all right? There's something that Dave and I have already talked about with somebody else, and that was to do something like a fixed route with them, where the, the, the eleven riders would hit their system, and he would figure out a route to pick them all up and take them, and then bring them back.
We know the concentration of the jobs that are, and the, the potential for more jobs and where they're going. We need to, we need to have a transit route in place to get people there.
We know Lordstown, we know North Jackson are the hotspots now, and that's something that, like you said, if we can.
Right.
Get pass-through money, they can come back out through subcontractors to add routes, add drivers, add cars, add maybe other vendors to do that. So, we do the seniors, and then we got the job Uber or whatever, Trumbull County Job Uber to get them to the job and back, and that's it. That's got to be more economical, I would think, than, than the route that we're being pushed towards.
Here, here's our problem, go, go.
Well, the one thing I was going to say is, though, we're still talking about running that one route.
Yes.
That Warren Express, whatever, whatever it's called.
Yeah, of course.
Um, that, and it still can account for a lot of those people that we're talking about. And then maybe where that ends, we can have shuttles or something from there, doing shorter trips to Lordstown or, or wherever the case.
So, you, you could run a route from Youngstown Terminal to Lordstown every day, at the beginning and end of a shift.
Because the Warren Express comes here. The Warren Express comes here, so we just, we just station vehicles at, at wherever Warren Express ends, and have a set, you know, there's eleven of them going to Lordstown, there's that, and we just, and work from there.
And that's where my, no, in fact, that, you know, as transit administrator, the levy's part of your job, but this other transit stuff, this new creative stuff, I would think is under your better than two.
No, no, it definitely is. The problem comes then is, we did, when, when I say we, the four vendors have done twenty-four thousand five hundred trips already. WRCA fixed route, these routes, is thirty-five thousand trips. I, these vendors cannot handle thirty-five thousand trips, that's where the problem is. So, how do you say, we're going to transport this, this general public, but we're not doing this one? That's where, that's where you're walking.
I would think a lot of their trips are essential trips with the seniors, where a lot of those other trips may not be essential trips. Like you said, we're talking about people riding the bus all day, getting counted as a figure, just to stay warm or just to stay cool.
And here's the other part, if we're using local money, we can basically do whatever you want with it. Once you get into federal dollars, that's when you get into the problem, because once you say federal dollars, then you have to follow their rules. With local money, you just want, if you wanted to do something like with Comfort Caravan for whatever the dollar amount is to run something like that, we probably could do that.
People wouldn't be looking at a seven million dollar tax.
Right.
They'd be targeting your needs.
Yeah.
That's what I'd be looking at.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, that is one of the solutions, I'm not, it's just that, we, it wouldn't be open up to every, to general public for everybody.
Well.
It would just be for a small, maybe just for work, what you would say, work in medical or something, I don't know. I mean, that's what we'd have to come up with.
You have, so, I just want to make sure we're keeping this in mind, you have a ton of medical opportunities through job and family services with N E T transportation and Medicaid. So, a lot of these people who are in this county, who are on Medicaid, can utilize CareSource, can utilize, you know, whatever Medicaid MCLs that they have, they can utilize that, let's not forget that. And I think a lot of those people are also kind of passing over into this WRCA route. A lot of them, you know, and I'm going to be honest here, a great percentage of our county is on Medicaid. So, they have rights available to them through their managed care provider. So, we may have to go back to that, where we're reiterating to people that you got to use what services you already have.
We, we started at the fair, I, I watched you talk to someone at the fair, the people there were complaining, 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 and I was interested, solved the problem with them in like three minutes by explaining what we have to offer, give them the phone numbers.
Didn't even know they had. I mean, they'll take them to Cleveland Clinic.
Right.
I mean, you, you guys know this, we do a contract with you, right, so, so there's that.
And they were, they were bashing us, oh, we can't get rides to the doctor, I can't get here, I can't get there, and she said, yes, you can.
Yeah, yes, you can.
Here's the phone number, you call it, and it's on deal.
Correct. So, that might be something that you want to kind of partner with, I mean, I'm not saying JFS's, their funds is local and, or, excuse me, state federal. So, they can't, you know, their money can't be used, but maybe we just need to re-educate the public in Trumbull County that there are options out there if you have Medicaid. Another thing that I wanted.
I just want to say that most of those people are already utilizing.
They're already using, that's a.
We do, we do, between CareSource and United, which is the.
The top two, yeah.
Primary Medicaid providers in this area, we, we do probably a couple hundred trips a day, well, a hundred trips a day between them and.
Sure.
Mahoning and Trumbull County, so there is a lot, I think they're utilizing that. One difference, and, and I've said this for, for years now, Trumbull County is not providing wheelchair transport to them.
Right, yeah, we know that.
And Mahoning County is.
Sure.
So, there's a lot of people that may be falling through the cracks that way.
Yeah.
That would then end up over with WRCA, I could say this for, for five years now, but Trumbull County should be providing wheelchair transports to Medicaid individuals.
Yeah.
God's and family services, that's their responsibility and.
Agreed.
I don't know how they're not doing.
Right, yeah, so, going back to what I was talking about, when we, um, on our application, we have, are you a part of Medicaid? If so, do you get transportation to them? They check, yes, we mark them on our sheet that they are Medicaid, and they have to take Medicaid first.
Good, that's great.
That's what they do. Now, if Med, if for whatever reason Medicaid can't take them for something, then we'll take them, but nine out of ten of the time, Medicaid always takes them. But the interesting part with all this is, uh, the vendors for Medicaid are the same vendors we have.
Yeah, that's true.
USA Taxi and Garment.
I mean, when you look at what we have going here with our senior rides, our disabled rides, Medicaid rides, there's a very small segment of the population.
That's what.
That is depend, that is not dependent on that.
Correct.
So, throwing seven million, uh, I know I sound like a broken record, but throwing all this money at that problem, at one to three percent of the population, tops, is, is not financially prudent to, it's just not.
And we can't, so, we can still get rides for those people, we're not saying.
Yes, of course, of course.
Would just forget that one percent, I think we still can't ride.
But we could do it more economically.
Not only economically, but I would think more comfortable for them too.
Right.
I mean, door-to-door, uh, services you provide, sir, is a hell of a lot better than someone having to get up, bundle up, get to the bus stop.
Right.
Deal with the getting on and off the bus by themselves without you holding them hand, helping them with their bags, things like that, than it is now, so.
And no offense, no offense, but WRCA and a lot of their contract language, they can't do a lot of that personalized stuff.
No, they don't.
And they won't, they cannot.
And they will not.
Because it looks like the bargaining agreements, and I understand that.
No.
But at the same time, when we had our own transit i- in this county, people got spoiled and got a lot of that treatment and, and. That's something that can't be ignored when you're going to, if and when you're going to transition over to something.
Right.
That personal touch matters.
Oh, no, no, you're absolutely right.
Especially for a lot of those people.
So, the big, the other big difference is, with the on-demand, like we're doing, the clients call in, they have an actual time, they're going to be picked up at ten o'clock. Now, there's a window there that they got to be ready by, there's like a thirty-minute window, but they know at ten o'clock, they better be ready.
Yeah.
Right.
And whereas with the fixed route, they have to walk to that fixed route, wait for that bus, and then they go on that time schedule, that's.
There's no way in the world someone should have to sit when their work shift is done, instead of a bus stop for two hours to wait to get home, to even get on the bus to get home. Or go into their employer over an hour early.
Just, uh.
At five AM in the morning or six forty or whatever it was, and i- it's ridiculous.
Right, but, so the other part is, like you said, we will pick them up at the curb, we'll pick them right at their door, they'll go right to the door and pick them up.
Will go in house. For, for disabled, will go in.
Right, and then when they take them to a doctor's appointment, they will take them through the door to that doctor's appointment. Or with that fixed route, same thing. They get off at that bus stop, now they have to walk, whatever it happens to be, to get to their, where they're going.
And we get them, you know, the scenario, the one that sticks in my head constantly was, when I first got elected, I get a phone call from a, a woman, and she was hot that her mother, or her father, they had a route that went to Akron. Went to Akron, from Akron, went to the VA, came back to Akron, the bus back to Warren, didn't run that night, and she said her father slept at a bus stop overnight in the cold in October, and overnight, like a homeless person, and that can never happen again, ever. You know, and that's not going to happen with.
Well, that's.
With the service that we provide in Trumbull County.
Well, and again, I'm not going to put words in Dave's mouth, but he's told me, if he drops somebody off or something, he makes sure he goes back and gets them.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
WRCA doesn't do that, the bus driver there is, I'm sure they're not.
Right.
I mean, we have a, we have a schedule, it's all computerized.
Yeah.
And then we know everybody that's been dropped off, and we know who's on a will-call list because they haven't been dropped yet, those kinds of things.
Yeah, so he, I mean, he, I don't know how late he's been out, but I know he's been out, the drivers have been out later than what they're supposed to be to make sure they pick people up. That's the difference, whereas you're right, with a fixed route, if it stops at six o'clock, it stops at six o'clock. So, I mean, that's where we're at right now, so I think we're going to have to have another discussion.
I think we need to, first things first, we need to have essential discussions with these participating communities, the ones that are utilizing the transit system and these bus routes. What can they bring to the table? It can't all fall on Trumbull County taxpayers. If there's a way that we can come up with our own funding, our own local funding, to make it happen, that's what we should do.
Mike, are you, are you going to be in town for a while, or?
I'm going to be in town till tomorrow, I'm going to be out for a couple days, I'll be back.
Is there a possibility, do you have time later today or tomorrow to maybe just drive out to Altium, meet with their human resources?
I could possibly do that.
I'll get you a phone number, who to meet with, but.
Yeah.
Something to at least open communication up with them, because they did reach out and said, hey, what are you going to do with our employees, they're going to be able to get here after September eighth.
Right.
We don't want to let them go, but they got to be here at work.
Yeah, um, I could do that, there's one thing I was going to say, but, but, oh, I know what it was, you're talking about the, um, communities. One of the things, and I'm going to throw this back on you, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that you had asked for, we wanted good numbers from.
Hmm?
The numbers are like twenty-one thousand, we take the numbers right off of their inventory.
Sure.
The numbers are good, what we've done. Diane and I both have also put together, or she's put together, a program where we have numbers by community. Diane has that number.
We need to see those.
So we need to see those numbers.
And then we need to contact those communities and sit down with them and say, these are, these are people living in your community that you represent. We're willing to assist, but what are you willing to bring to the table?
What are you willing to bring to the table?
Otherwise, there's gonna be a tax, and we don't wanna do that.
And like you said, besides the government partnership, there may be a blend of government and private partnership when you're talking Foxconn and Alti.
Right.
Maybe they, maybe they got a little leak and kick into the kitty.
No, they're, they're. Right.
To be a good neighbor, good employer. I mean, they, they provide other benefits.
Absolutely.
Uh, Honor Yoder?
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's maybe not the most popular thing, but, um, I do think that if they, they need to be working with their employees as well, and I don't necessarily advocate that they do what I'm going to say, but I'm just giving this as an example. Uh, my late husband works for a factory in Burton, Ohio, and if you know Burton and Geogee County, it's very, uh, filled with people with last names like mine. And many of them, most of them, don't drive, and his factory, uh, actually brought people to work. They, they took care of that. Now, the employees had to pay for a little bit, they had to kick in, but they actually took care of that. My husband was van driver, it's one of the things he did at that factory. And so, you know, it's, it's doable, factories all through Geogee County.
Sounds like smart business.
Have, have, have those kinds of things where they work with their employees to make sure they can get people to work. And when you've got, it's one, it's not just one employee, when you've got a group, that makes it easier.
Well, and it's a ride share, right? I mean, they're all contributing, sorry. I guess that's my point. We know that in Trumbull County, and I, I'm gonna be honest here, too,
Yeah. Right.
we have a certain Amish population, we do, and they have no problem with ride shares, they have no problem getting to where they need to go.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think we really just need to open our, our, open our perspectives to like different types, maybe not necessarily WRTA.
Lots of Yoder toders out there.
You know, the one to three percent.
So we're gonna, we're gonna send Mike up to the transportation to lift their weight to learn.
Well, I mean, we gotta look, we gotta look at different ways. I mean, I just, I'm just calling it fade to fade, you know, and.
That's true.
The joke you're absolutely right, and again, backing up what you said, I've been in transportation almost thirty years, there are a lot of industries that will.
They will.
help out with transportation, because they want their employees to get to work.
Right. Hey, hey, we, nothing says we have to do what every other city does, we can create our own thing, that could be better and let people learn from us.
Right.
Exactly.
Like you said, with the Amish community, it is a nail in the head. It sounds funny, and we all.
Oh, I didn't mean to sound funny, but I mean, I'm just stating facts.
No, I'm saying, but that works, that works, it, it does work. There's a system of drivers out there, there's a system of van drivers.
And they do well.
There's probably a system of drivers that would be willing to take English to work if they, if they could, you know, the same people, and, and it's not very expensive. I mean, to get people to and from work, especially if you got a van and you got six people heading same direction.
Exactly, yes.
Um, there's a system that could work in there some way.
Well, and they do that, they actually, there's people that do that for, in Geogee County, and even where I live, where, um, you take a, a cleaning crew of girls from, say, where I live in Farmington to Solon, and they drop them off at their places where they're gonna clean, and then they pick them up in the afternoon.
And there are people that go to, that, that go to the cabinet factories up in Middlefield every day.
Yeah, every day, right.
Droping people off and picking them up.
And.
Yes, sir.
Well, we do a program in.
Say your name again for the record.
I'm sorry, say your name.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we do a program in also in Mahoney County with B B R, the Bureau of Occupational Rehab, where we take people to work every day, pick them up afterwards and so on.
Yeah.
It's an easy ride for them, and it's, it's not, it just goes into our system like we normally do. So the occupational thing may not be that difficult. I think the more concern is that route and, and the people that are using it for a variety of different reasons. But, you know, and we're about to hit that on September eighth, there is no transport for some of these.
Also, too, one more suggestion that you might think about, Commissioners and Mike, is you may make it, you know, let's go back to J F S's eligibility standard. So you may, we may have to look at the point where if you meet a certain threshold and you can't afford to get a car, it's an application system where if we go to the specific Trumbull County Transit, I'm just saying, like our own little creation,
Right.
where they're applying for it in advance, we're looking at them if they're eligible, we pre-screen if they're on Medicaid or whatever the case may be, but we may just need to look at it a little bit differently, like an actual program that Trumbull County alone is offering.
No, you're, you're absolutely.
With funds from other entities.
No, you're absolutely right, because I've talked to clients that are Medicare, they don't even know they offer transportation.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, you need to call your caseworker and see if you can get transportation that way. So, yeah, that is another alternative, because a lot of these clients don't know, and granted, yes, I know they gotta follow the process of qualified, but still.
And that may eliminate some of the, and I don't mean to put it so bluntly, but that may eliminate some of the homelessness and stuff on the buses, you know. We won't be having a bus, it would be a dedicated route that they have to be eligible for and pre-screened for. So that way, we're sure that people who are riding are going to, to and from work, or to and from wherever they need to be going. It's a way to kinda control it without, you know, spending a ton of money that we just don't need to spend.
All good stuff here, all good stuff. Mike's staying in communication when the meeting's over.
Alright, thanks. I'm, I'm gonna stick around.
Let, let's see if we can do something to connect you up with at least, let Alti feel like we're working with them and starting to build their voice bridge.
Well, maybe a holiday and see what we can do and, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, next issue. Sir, do you have something for us right there?
Uh, yeah. Todd Price, Johnson. I slapped Mr. Vogt, cause he said he didn't really wanna come back. I didn't really wanna come back either, um, but you guys were very generous early part of the year, um, for power cuts for two of my units. Uh, we serviced, as you remember, Johnson, Vernon, Kinsman, Gustavus, and Green. About two months after, um, we had a catastrophic failure of one of our three units, transport units. Uh, we now have Kinsman's down at Johnson, serving as our second unit as a backup. Um, we have gone roundabout with new versus old to replace, uh, to buy a new, uh, this out at the end of twenty twenty-five. Financially is a really bad number, as well as a delay. Um, right after the failure, I did put in another ARPA grant, it's requested by trustees, I sat with Kinsman, sat with them. We do know at that point, there was a, you know, another surge of money coming. Um, I'm fairly up to date on the pause, I just wanted to say, this is still sitting out there. Um, I hope that it could be looked at, um, if money remains available. Um, what we've budgeted is about a two-thirds request for the project. We'd be asking for a hundred and twenty-seven for our remount. Uh, we have a company, um, that would do a remount for us. Uh, we tentatively reserved a spot with them next year, would go in in April of next year, and be a three-month process. Um, so the one twenty-seven, if ARPA funds are available, out of pocket, out of the EMS district, would cover the cost of the whole thing, we put that unit back in service to further north, east, or the township.
Chief, what, what areas is that serviced again?
So that is the township, Vernon, Kinsman, Gustavus. An initial grant, which I was.
And the reason I ask is, we've already got something that came up from Johnson, and then we have Johnson again for the cemetery, we have Johnson again for, uh, water and material storage.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think if we can modify the Johnson Township Fire Department, this request, there are some like Green, I don't think they've put in for anything yet. Vernon put in for something that was denied, Kinsman put in for something that was denied, and we've got a couple other ones from Kinsman. It'll look a little better doing it that we know that covers that whole area, and might not just be Johnson getting something again, um, it'll make it a little easier when we vote, I think.
Okay.
But that's the green.
Yeah, well, the, there was a lot of pens making out requests, I have met with Dominic Marques, as well as Mr. Davis. Both of them prioritize this piece of equipment over their other things. Um, I know in talking with Kinsman, they also at that point didn't know how the police thing would end up, and we do know that now. So, um, that would be our hope, this would be, they're getting a unit shared by five communities, um, and could be executed, so. Any additional info I can give you down the line, I'm happy to come back. I just wanted to throw that out there, so I knew you did have those sitting there, um, as well.
Hey, it's in the system then, we're accepting applications till September fifteenth, and then shortly after that.
And this was turned in, I believe.
Oh, yeah, we got it at.
Yeah, June twenty-eighth, so you're in, you're, you're good. It's just when the, we, when we turn the machine back on after September fifteenth.
I understand. And I didn't wanna try to pressure the, the timeline, it's just, I wanted to make sure you knew that this was a priority item for each of those townships.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next order of business, anybody else felt, what do you guys wish?
I don't know. No, um, other than moving forward with the dock time issue, still our total time maintenance starting, um, I've talked to Bill D'Anto and Jason Phildust there, so I need to forward an email to them on how the dock time came about, where we need to be to hire a architect engineer, to at least get a number of what it would cost to engineer the town and or hire the firm to for, for, for construction part. So we need to sit down with, with the attorney, or who we need to sit down to draw the line, make sure we have the east in place. Make sure everybody's reasonable on the property, the east that, that, that forth, and then start.
Um, you weren't here last week?
I was, not at the workshop, no.
Okay. I, I brought up the issue across the street, we talked about who, who does the maintenance around the courthouse there, who really owns it, the title search thing. Back sidewalk, um, when we had the Italian Fest, there's parts where it's sticking up and down and grass growing through it, and I watched quite a few people trip as they were heading down the kind of midway, the main aisle, um, and I brought this, I brought it up to the attention of Eddie Colbert and the mayor, so something needs to be done with that sidewalk before we have any more festivals there. If that is partially our responsibility or not, I, I don't know.
We share with Warren City.
Then that's something we may wanna get with them to see how, what do we need to do at slate, they need to keep the historic look to it and stuff, but they need to be pulled up, re-smooved out, and then put back down. I think we can reutilize the slate that's there possibly, or maybe get one or two more pieces from somewhere.
Yeah.
But, uh, it is a danger, where someone's gonna get hurt.
On the front side of the courthouse.
On the.
That's the front side.
Yeah, on the front side.
Orange Street is the front side.
Yeah, the main, the main walkway, when people would come any time Fest, to make it to the stage area, all the way across to make it.
Yeah. Well, we do it within the sidewalk, so the sidewalk generally, that would be Warren City's.
Well, this is the sidewalk in the middle.
Right down the center.
Yes.
Okay.
So. Okay. Honor Yoder?
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Uh, first of all, I apologize, I had a spreadsheet attached to this, but unfortunately, I realized it didn't fit one column that I added. So I'm gonna send out copies of the new spreadsheet after the meeting to you guys.
Okay.
Um, but that spreadsheet that I'll be sending to you, um, does have, um, some typos fixed, and I also, that one of those actually changed the numbers just slightly. Um, and also, after the meeting tomorrow, um, when you approve the change order for the roof, I will add that cost in, I'll update that. Um, the large change that, on the spreadsheet that you will get is that, um, I added a column for locations, and I think we have the locations narrowed down. Although I do wanna check with Johnson EMS, because, um, I had that just as Johnson, and if that impacts others, I'll make sure that I fix not only that, but also the maps that I've given you. Um, so I did do a map, uh, I thought it was my final map for that, but if, if that changes, I'll get that, I'll make that change and get that to you. I've also, um, on the spreadsheet that you'll get, um, I wanted to note that when, um, I did note those locations, I put, um, most of the capital improvement projects, I did not put as a county-wide impact, I just left them at, you'll see in N A. There's a few exceptions, the fairgrounds, the egg building, because I felt that was, had much more of a county-wide impact, and that was in discussing that with Mr. Masaki, the nine-one-one generator and the nine-one-one phone station had all been listed as capital improvement, but I felt that those should, they have a county-wide impact. So I, I put those as county-wide, and you'll see those listed, um, on the map alongside the map, that, alongside, on the side of the map, things that had a county-wide impact. Um, also on that spreadsheet, I removed the requests that were denied, and anything that we had zeroed out as redundant, I've taken that off. Um, I thought the map was complete, like I said, I'm going to check with Johnson and verify that, and see if there's more of an impact on that Johnson EMS. If there is, we'll add that to, to the places that are impacted, just so I'm, so we have a, a fuller understanding of it. Um, I've also included with my map that I made, an in-depth map that the sanitary engineers have made, um, it's behind the large map, it's more in-depth. I didn't, I wanted to keep my map really simple, um, but I thought that you guys might wanna see those, that information as well, and also included, um, a sheet from Mr. Um, Newbrow with a listing of all the projects that they're doing and the impact that it has. So I've included all of that. My next step, outside of making sure that my map is revised, if necessary, is to take Mr. Masaki's spreadsheet with all the projects that have been submitted but not committed to, and add locations to those, so that when you guys get those spreadsheets, um, we'll have that all for you as you try to make decisions, um, with the remaining money. Um, I, I think it would be, uh, I think it's more helpful to do this alone rather than another map, but if you guys want a map of those prospective projects, I'll be glad to do that as well, whatever you guys want.
It's great, Martha, I have above, above and beyond.
Perfect.
Yeah. I mean, this really, really does paint a picture of areas that have been served, areas that haven't been served, it's really, I think it'll help us as we divvy out the rest of the money, uh, and allocate the money, this is gonna be most helpful. And I see, just looking at the map.
You can see, yeah.
The north, north.
Right.
East quadrant is grossly underserved right now.
Right. Now, again. Again, one of the things that, um, and, and I'll probably need to, maybe you have the contact information, we can, we can look, I can look at what the grant was, or the original request as well.
Yeah, I do.
And we can determine some of that EMS that you see in Johnson.
Yeah.
That even though it was asked for by Johnson, it probably has more of an impact on the northern.
Right, like, well, it's that whole quadrant that I'm talking about, it's all there is.
Right, yeah, right, so, um, and then, um, I know, um, that Farmington had submitted, it was a request for a road, which happens to be a road I travel every day, but it's like, somebody goes, do you know where that is? I'm like, yeah. But, uh, we had had road requests that were denied through legal before, so I've been encouraging them to find something else, submit it.
And I forgot to put in a few calls in the last week of people saying, hey, is it too late, should we do this, should we not? I know, I don't know if you heard from, uh, Gustavus yesterday, but they, they have one in for a road, and they said, well, if that gets denied, we've got two or three other ones, should we submit them now, or should we wait to see if it's denied or not? I told them to submit them now, just so we have them in this first round of things, and not wait until to see if there's anything left over in the second round.
That's, and basically, anybody who's asked me that, that's what I say, just submit.
And we, we'll need to schedule our meeting shortly after September fifteenth to get this ball rolling again.
So you guys are satisfied with, uh, me just taking that, that spreadsheet and adding locations to it, if that'll work, alright?
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Um, okay, next thing, I, I did bring up something last week at the meeting about the issue in Warren Township with the road being half-done. Um, the county engineer pulling those, the workers off. I looked into that, there was a conflict. Clearly, some of the, um, county workers were putting arms away, someone by a gentleman over there, an unruly gentleman. Um, but the police have handled it, it went to the prosecutor's office, there's no charges on the individual, no charges on our county engineer, our employee that retaliated. Um, that done issue was according to the prosecutor, the county engineer told me on the phone, he's not sending his workers back until the issue's done. Um, when I talked to police chief the other day, he said the issue is done. He said they will provide safety, uh, police protection for the county engineer and his employees. Warren Township said, the trustee said they will pay for it, at no cost to the county, uh, they'll appropriate more officers out there when they're on the job. It'll take them about a day and a half to finish the job, so I'm gonna reach out to, um, Randy Smith again and ask him to please, before the weather changes, we've got ninety-degree weather next week. Let's get this job done, and let's not have any further delay with this. I mean, I don't know what more of a, we can offer him. I mean, if we want sheriff deputies out there, also, we'll do that, but we need, we can't leave a road half-done, and when I got the call from the superintendent of schools over there, it is a real safety issue. I drove by it the other day, and you've got one side of the road paved, the other side not, and I could see when the snow falls, too, it's gonna be, uh, it's, it is a township road that we're doing the, the work for them, but it, it's gonna be nearly impossible to plow and keep it nice and safe, and they're already having problems with the buses now, I could see it only being even worse. There is a curve there. So, uh, I'm gonna reach out in hopes that the county engineer now will. So, uh, I'm gonna reach out in hopes that the county engineer now will see that the, it's done. There's nothing more the prosecutor's gonna do, nothing more the police are gonna do. You know, it's a done issue, we're sorry that it occurred, I mean, it was something that, that, the pro, the prosecutor's, when they ruled no charges, it wasn't the police chief's call. So, um, we'll see if we can get that done. Anything else? Alexandria, you got the HR interviews going on right now?
Yep, I finished. I have one today and one tomorrow, and then I will-
Okay, you're losing an employee from your department that's going to the prosecutor's office?
Mm-hmm.
That was from an internal posting, apparently, or how that?
Yeah.
Internal?
We have a lot of that going on in the county right now, I'm not gonna, you know, lie to you guys. We have a ton of transferring, I mean, you see it every week on the agenda, sanitary engineers revolving door.
And at least-
Um-
I'm sorry, but at least some of the CBAs, cause why not?
She took some of, yeah.
I'm sorry.
So, we're, no, it's okay.
But our CBA requires, our CBA requires not-
Yeah.
The posting to the union, but also posting countywide within, you know, within the county. So, it's, it's a CBA, we have to do it.
So, that's the thing, I mean, we have to post each other's-
And that's okay, they're staying within the family, someone with the money themselves, you go in a different department, there's-
Well, and again, some of mine apply other places too, only one of mine. Um, and I, I told her when she came to me and said she was applying, I said, "Well, I am excited every morning to come to work. I want everybody else to feel the same way I do." So, if you're not happy, if you need to be wherever, you're gonna be happy. That's what I think to be.
That's it, true.
I think we need to talk with Alex probably a little bit too, there's some contractual issues, I think, that are causing issues for us. We're getting people who are offered day turn jobs elsewhere, making what our top pay is. Whereas if we could, you know, potentially offer them that top pay, they would stay with us. They like the work that they're doing, but they're leaving because they have kids and, you know, day turn.
Well, Alex, you had a plan that you went over with me. Let's get that plan rolling. Let's get that plan for supervisors, let's get that pay increase plan.
We're working on it.
Let's get moving on that thing.
We gotta get them staffed.
As quick as you can, because-
Yeah.
I think that'll solve a lot of the problems. When they see-
It will.
They can get paid more to stay doing what they're doing.
Right.
Um, I'd hate to lose a couple people and then we make this change next year, and it's like, damn, we're losing them.
Well, I, I think among the, a lot of the issues too are, you know, steps. I know a lot of places are doing away with the steps where you're starting at a probationary rate, and once you make probation, then you move to that top step. Because when you can hire in at Target, working in the department store for eighteen bucks an hour, and you have our dispatcher starting at seventeen, I wouldn't wanna dispatcher seventeen bucks an hour, that stressful job. And I get it, I mean, it's the nature of the beast right now with the economy, the way it is, I mean, gas is through the roof. I mean, I can speak to that clearly, just driving here four days a week. Why do you think I'm gonna start staying for? But, um-
I mean, you gave me chills when you said just this weekend, the storm comes in, you got four employees working or whatever, and a hundred phone calls came in in an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And the phone lines lit up the whole time. Someone's gotta deal with that. And then again, someone's under a bed, a guy's in the house with a gun, trying to kill people, and-
Yeah, yeah.
Your dispatcher's dealing with that. I don't think sanitary engineers have dealt with that this week.
Well, and, and-
I know our department, one of our departments.
No, unfortunately, it's a perpetual cycle too, cause like I said, with the overtime, people are, you're getting burnt out, so then what happens? You work, so I work my normal shifts, and then I work forty hours overtime, so what do I do? I'm burnt out, so I call in sick because I need a break mentally, physically, you know, you need to sleep sometime. Now, you, that perpetual cycle of just overtime, 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 but it's a double-edged sword. I know Patty and I have discussed it at length lately, because what's gonna happen is, when we do get fully staffed, now these employees are gonna be, "Well, where's my paycheck?", because they were working all these overtime. So, you're never gonna, you know, make everybody happy at the same time, but we definitely need to get some more staffing, and I think we need to look at the contractual issues of the starting pay, and maybe change it to a probationary pay and then top pay. Because obviously, we don't wanna invest time in people and have them be here for six months, and they're fully trained and they're ready to go, and now they're looking elsewhere because they could make, you know, a couple bucks more and have a less stressful job.
Right.
Well, I mean-
That's one of the reasons you're there, is to stop the bleeding.
We can look at that too. I mean, it is up to the director's discretion at the time of hiring to bring them in at that mid, the, I'm sorry, the bottom, mid, or max. But that is your discretion when you hire them. So, if you come to me and say, "Alex, I wanna bring this person in at the twenty-two", we're gonna bring them in at the twenty-two. I'll, we'll help justify it, as long as they have that experience. But that's there for that reason, so let's, we gotta make sure that we use that, uh, clause in there too. Um, and then, um, we have to, have to stress this, we have to get them fully staffed before we can get to that place where we're putting in that upper level, well, mid managerial level is what I wanna call it. That we, what we don't wanna do is post three supervisor jobs at a pay range ten and have the three people that we have left on the floor bidding on those jobs. Then what's gonna happen, guys, is you have nobody actually being a telecommunications at that point. Now, granted, we have baked into the supervisors roles and responsibilities that they too will be monitoring calls, that they will be running the cat, that they will be doing these things. But we really gotta get these four people through, uh, the door and then backfill the one that we're gonna lose to the prosecutor's office. I mean, because of the hours, and I'm just gonna put a point blank. They wanna work, you know, steady Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, and it's a little bit of a pay raise. We're seeing what we can do with that, and I'm pending some stuff from that employee, but we'll, I mean, I'll try to keep them anyway, I can't. But, you know, I can't offer them Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, I can't. So, and maybe you'll offer them a little bit more money, that's all I can do, so. Like, put them at that top rate is what I'm saying, which we'll look at, but.
Gary, you haven't asked for a dollar today or anything, you everything okay?
Uh, October the twelfth, we are having a public hearing for Yankee Lake. It's gonna be in the Yankee Lake Ballroom. I made arrangements with that yesterday and talked to Lisa about it. Uh, so, that'll be on next week's agenda with the necessity resolution.
Very good.
Um-
We don't need the extra money for-
No.
That you anticipated, that's even better.
As a matter of fact, we're around twenty-five bucks a month on a capital charge, so that would be great. And I have a application here for that, I need Commissioner Kendall Mesa's signature on it, before the end of the day. Uh, we also have, uh, um, Stewart Road, Spillville Drive, State Line Road, Still Wagon Water. Four other projects are ready to go to a public hearing. We're sort of rolling these off on an assembly line right now, so expect to have more public hearings there in the next months.
Oh, cool. That's just dope.
Good job. Anybody else for the greater good?
I'm actually adjourned.
Second?
Mr. Kinsella Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
This is Scott.